Good evening. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Board of Education to the board at this time. I also need to announce to you that at 6:30 we have an executive session with the committee discussing needle one personnel. At this time, would you please rise and join me in speaking.
I pledge allegiance to our God, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to ask Mrs. Blascher to call. I'm informing you that Dr. Loughlin is joining us by telephone this evening, so she will be part of the entire meeting and make the roll call. Mrs. Blascher, yes. Mrs. Elder. Here. Mr. Hauser. Mrs. Kozar.
Here.
Dr. Loughlin.
Here.
Mrs. May.
Here.
Here. Got your hand. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Bowler.
Yes.
Mr. Musing. Mr. Palmer.
Yes.
And Dr. Sorch.
Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Blascher. It's time for hearing of visitors part of line. If anyone in the audience wishes to address the board this evening on any item that is on tonight's agenda, please come to the podium and state your name now.
Krista Kane. I just want to thank you all for the science. We're excited. That's all I'm saying.
It is an exciting curriculum. Yes. Thank you. Would anyone else care to address the board this evening? I will move for the adoption of Resolution Number 234, the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held May the 20th, 2014, and the committee of the whole meeting held June 17th, 2014. So moved. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution Number 234. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor then please say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? And those who pass unanimously. So let's hear those reports. Mr. Naples.
I recommend that you move on Resolution 235, Student Disciplinary Matter 2013, 2014, number one. This matter has been thoroughly explained to the board in executive session, and I recommend that you so.
It's been moved and seconded that we pass Resolution Number 235. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor then please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone who passed? And that passes unanimously. Legislative report, Dr. Loughlin.
Hmm.
You have a legislative report.
I did not.
Okay. I think Mr. Mears wanted to say something about sports. Oh, it's sports. I'm sorry. Yeah.
Did you?
Should we get you in there though? All right. Under education and planning, we're so pleased to have with us this evening Mrs. Bates to talk to us a little bit about sixth grade camp.
This is really different here compared to where we used to be. First, I'd like to say to the board, thank you so very much for giving me the opportunity. And I told myself I wasn't good at this. To be the director of sixth grade camp for the last 14 years and to be able to attend 39 out of 40 years that camp did exist. It is one of the greatest experiences that I have had in my life and to the students. This year, we were fortunate to have 272 students from sixth grade that went to camp. Approximately 10 people did not. We had 56 counselors and we had 94 teachers, so a total of 422 people that went to camp. Every year, the board gives us $7,500. We spent approximately $6,000 of that this year. Not all the bills are in, so officially, I'm not done with camp yet until all the bills are finally in. We have been able, over these last years, because of grants and because of the community support that we get, we have been able to get 14 kayaks, life jackets for all of them, a trailer, fishing gear, rifles, indoor coat materials, compoundos, scholarships, so that students that are not able to afford camp do have that opportunity to go to camp. And the business radios, which became very important because how spread out we are. It is amazing how much our community does support us, and these things would not have been possible without that. In the kayaks, we were able to purchase one for the larger students, and we were able to purchase double kayaks, so that a student who normally would not get to go out in a kayak can have a lifeguard with them and still experience that. We have started many new activities. Fishing became so popular that we added it into our curriculum, and I will tell you that Mrs. Boreo will have to, next year, purchase more fishing gear. We had 45 to 50 students every morning that would come out to go fishing, and we do not have enough fishing gear to do that. And we're talking 6:30 in the morning for them to be able to go out and do that. We started this year the geocaching, and if you're not aware of what that is, it's like orbiting, and the kids use GPSs, and they work their way through the woods, and when they get to the spot that they should be at, there is a little stamp there, and they get to stand it. It's something that we wanted to try, and it's something that is done all over the world, and so that was something that we wanted to do. The tentative dates, and I say to this to you that they're tentative, they're never official until we finally pay the bill, will be May 13th through the 15th of next year, and that will be Bagley, that will be going first, 18th through the 20th will be L.A.S., and the 20th through the 23rd. I will leave with you DVDs from each of the schools. That's one of the things that we started. Parents have requested that, and that has become a big fundraiser for us. We raise approximately $1,500 every year on selling the DVDs, and now they're asking for the 8x10s, and so we also sell that. Before I leave you, I need to read this to you. This was written by one of our sixth grade students at the end of camp last year, and sometimes people think that when camp is over, it's over, but it really isn't. The teachers continue to have the kids write poems and letters and things like that about the camping experience. And so one of the teachers said to the students, "Camp is going to be canceled, and you need to persuade our superintendent that this should not happen." And so they had to write this persuasive letter, and I have several, I'll leave them for you, but this one I thought you really needed to hear. "You have to keep sixth grade camp. This is important. Sixth grade camp is something no child should be deprived of. I hope you are all ears, because I'm going to give you some of the important information on why you need to keep camp. While at camp, I enjoy things I wouldn't have had at home. You get all new responsibilities and experiences. Teamwork is the main factor at camp, too. Whatever you do, don't get rid of camp, all right?" One thing that I had at camp was responsibility. At camp, I had to take responsibility to a whole new level. Between the cabins, dining hall, and amphitheater, I had to do a lot of cleaning. Throughout the meals at camp, the people I sat with, and I took turns serving and cleaning the tables. If you were a server, you were responsible for arriving early for whatever meal you were to serve. Since there is no class, which that has changed, you have to extra careful not to be late, because if you're late, Mrs. Bates hasn't got a job for you. If you are cleaning up, you have to stay after the meal and clean the table. You want to be quick cleaning while cleaning up, because you don't want to be late for the activities. Another thing I was responsible was for the cabin. Before we left camp, we had to make sure the cabin was spotless. My group swept, mopped, scrubbed, sprayed, and wiped every surface of our cabin before we left. Our cabin was as clean as a whistle. Not only did you have to have the responsibility of cleaning at camp, but you also had to be on time. If you were a server at mealtime, you had to remember to show up early than anyone else. After each meal, had time to gather your stuff from your cabin, but if you were late to arrive at your meeting spot, you were in trouble. You can clearly see that kids get a lot of responsibility at camp. Trust me, it wasn't a walk in the park either. Other than responsibility, I got other responsibilities I got at camp. We did an ample amount of activities at camp that I probably would not get to do at home. For example, we did kayaking. Before camp, I never kayaked. I didn't know the safety rules of it either. Thanks to camp, now I know. We also got to shoot guns. Before shooting, we went over the safety procedures of the gun. Archery was another experience, was another thing we experienced. I may have done archery before, but I forgot some of the safety rules. We reviewed them all and got to shoot. These experiences can help kids find what they're good at, plus you may never get to do anything like that again. Finally, I learned to use teamwork. On the first day of camp, my group and I went to the cope course. At times, it could get strenuous, but we kept our heads and figured it out together as the spider web station, the spider web stood tall and proud and wouldn't let us pass. We wouldn't have gotten through the station without good teamwork and finding each other's strength. Teamwork also showed up in unexpected places, our tables and at mealtime, and be careful though. You didn't want your partner to be a bump in the log, or else you would get stuck doing all the work. On cleanup days, the cabin, everyone had a fair share of cleaning, not to mention the fact that everyone had to abide by the five-minute shower rule, which I call the PSSA, which is good, yes, of showers. There was a lot of teamwork at camp, right? Don't you see? You can't get rid of sixth grade camp. Kids experience things they need for when they are older. What would happen if a kid came to sixth grade and didn't get to go to sixth grade camp? They would be droll dumps all year. Camp is an experience of lifetime. I know I would want to linger longer. So that's what our kids say about you.
There's a question. You're just turning around and facing the line. I'm here to tell you that this is truly the end of the era, and they try to, now you're making me laugh. Mrs. Bates, the reason that sixth grade camp gets the support it does from both the district and the community is because of the great quality work that Mrs. Bates has put into it to find reputation. You know, all the students who graduate from here, one of their fondest memories is sixth grade camp and how much they learn and the experience of it, and believe me, Mrs. Bates, you've touched so many students' lives, and we are so very grateful for that. So to that end, we would like to present you with some flowers and a plaque. Talking about your sixth grade camp experience, we thank you from the bottom of our heart and heart, and we'll certainly miss you.
Well, Melissa knows, so I'll call away. All she has to do is call and tell me hi to you. Thank you so much.
While Mrs. May is getting her picture taken with Mrs. Bates, I don't need to respond. Number one, not being a camper by trade, why, I have been to camp several times, and I have told this story to Mrs. Bates, that as seniors graduating from the high school, I had an opportunity to speak with them and to talk with them about what their most memorable experience is in the school district. And that isn't just a senior high school question. Most of our students have been with us from K through 12th grade, and so it encompasses all those years. And by far, more than any other experience, they tell me it's the sixth grade camp experience. And to have that memory for our seniors, who at that point, it's six years from the time they were at camp, and they still comment on the impact that camp has made on them, is a credit to Mrs. Bates. And this year, I was at camp, and I got chastised immediately for not having the right shoes on. And the reason that I say that is because I didn't know what shoes to wear, but...
It's on the website.
Exactly. The running of the camp, the organization, the leadership, those are all of the things that you bring to camp. And as much as it's a love for you, I know also that there are strict rules and things that you put into place that are probably sometimes difficult, but that's what has made camp successful, and that's who you are. And I know that you have passed all of that on to Melissa there, considering what big shoes she has, but honestly, we know that you are here, and you are always available for us, and we truly, truly, Donna, appreciate all of your service to the school district. And there was never conversation about getting rid of camp, so if someone's putting that room or out there, I'd love to know who's putting my name on it, but I'm okay with that. So thank you, Donna, very much for your service to the district. Thank you.
12,000 kids.
Awesome.
12,000.
340 years. 12,000. That's better than a city.
And if you ever watch the students eat, it is an amazing feast. I can't, if you ever stop at a cafeteria, and you see how it runs in a school, and then you go there, and you wonder, why can't you not let that happen in the school cafeteria? It is truly amazing, and it's a credit to you, Donna, for that. And if you ever go, if you take your godchild to be picked up at the beginning of sixth grade camp, and then you go to pick him up after, the difference in the way the kids act, the way they act toward each other, the way they're carrying what they're carrying, everything about it, they have come together as a group, and they weren't a group. They were different when they went, and they're much better when they come back. Thank you.
My Catholic school mass is right, Donna. 12,000. Have to check.
Actually, it's more, because many of those classes were 350, 400. It's closer to 20, which is...
Thank you very much.
I will move for adoption of Resolution Number 236, the textbook approval for the new science curriculum, the science fusion. Second. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded with Resolution Number 236. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor then please say aye. Any votes? And that passes unanimously. I will also move for the adoption of Resolution Number 237, approval of the cell and health behavioral science, health sciences agreement. Second. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution Number 237. Questions or discussion? All those in favor then please say aye. Anyone who posts? And that passes unanimously. I will also move for the adoption of Resolution Number 238, approval of the listed tuition students for the 2014-2015 school year. Second. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution Number 238. Questions or discussion? All those in favor then please say aye. Anyone who posts? And that passes unanimously. I will also move for the adoption of Resolution Number 238, approval of the listed tuition students for the 2014-2015 school year. Second. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution Number 238. Questions or discussion? All those in favor then please say aye. Anyone who posts? That passes unanimously. And I would like to adopt all Resolutions Number 239 and 240. 239 being to approve the extended school year services program with NHS, and 242 would be to approve the overnight out-of-state trip for the process of 13. So moved. Seconded. Any questions or discussion on any of your resolutions? All those in favor then, of adopting 239 and 240, please say aye. Anyone who posts? And that passes unanimously. And I will also move to adopt Resolution Number 241 to accept the tuition rates for the 2014-2015 school year as listed. Second. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution Number 241. Any questions or discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye. Anyone who posts? That passes unanimously. I will also move for the adoption of Resolution Number 242 to approve the camp physical occupational therapy contract. Second. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution Number 242. Questions or discussion? All those in favor then please say aye. Anyone who posts? And that passes unanimously. And our next curriculum committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, August 19th, at 5:30 here in the CSC. And that ends my report, and we'll go to finance.
I'd like to bundle together Resolution Number 243, the treasuries reports, Number 244, payment of bills, and Number 245, judiciary transfers, and move for adoption of all three of them.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolutions Number 243, 244, and 245. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor then please say aye. Anyone who posts? And those who pass, that passes unanimously.
I move for adoption of Resolution Number 246, the approval of the insurance renewals for 2014-2015 school year.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution Number 246. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor then please say aye. Anyone who posts? And that passes unanimously.
I move for adoption of Resolution Number 247, reenactment of the F-511 taxes, and Resolution Number 248, reenactment of the per capita taxes.
Second. I want them bundled. Second. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolutions Number 247 and 248. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor then please say aye. Anyone who posts? And that passes unanimously.
I move for adoption of Resolution Number 249, extension of Section 125, cash benefit cap.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution Number 249. Questions or discussion? All those in favor then please say aye. Anyone who posts? And that passes unanimously.
I move for adoption of Resolution Number 250, for the adoption of the 2014-15 operating budget in the total amount of $51,216,674.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution Number 250. Any questions or discussion? Okay, we need a roll call vote on Resolution Number 250. Please, Mrs. Blascher. Yes. Mrs. Elder.
Yes.
Mrs. Kozar.
Yes.
Dr. Loughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Bowler.
Yes.
Mr. Palmer.
Yes.
Dr. Sorch.
Yes.
Mrs. Mayes.
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
I move for adoption of Resolution Number 251, approval of the millage levy for 2014-15.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution Number 251. Questions or discussion?
I think it should be noted that this millage levy is a raise of $1 mil over the last year's revenue.
Any other discussion or comments?
Before we adopt, I'd really like to thank Dan for all this hard work here, and if you weren't present, Dan did a presentation in May that lets the people know that the $1 mil increase was due to the Peasars, the state retirement account, and not all of the district. In fact, the district expenses have been going down over the years. This levy is a result of the Peasars' payments that we are looking at in the future, and Dan did a, I think, great job finding ahead for that, so I think that he did it for... Any other comment?
One of the concerns is that as years go by, we're going to have more and more Peasars' responsibility, and I have an unpopular opinion for a lot of people, but I always think that we should have taken our tax levy, we should increase the maximum allowed, and folks don't do it. And then $2.5 mil, because I think that we're going to be facing a big bill next year, or we're going to be facing a big bill after that, a big bill after that, until something comes.
Yes, there are a lot of...
I understand a lot to, because those $2.5 mil, I thought we should do a, in favor of raising the bill, obviously, because we provide excellent education, that's an opportunity for our students. We've done, we've done here, we've had five years, a lot of what's going on, and just as an example, tonight, Mrs. Bates's presentation about sixth grade camp, in our recent school district, there's a lot of donations and stuff, but if you think about it for a minute, if you didn't have a good school and people were involved, because it is a good school, then you wouldn't have this thing. So because of all these things that are going on with our school district, we've provided our community with something that they're going to be proud of, and I would hate to have us in the future strapping things that are necessary because of these things. And in favor of being fair taxpayers, and also being kind, we would have to pay for the...
Thank you. Anyone else want to comment? Do you need a roll call vote for Mrs. Blascher? Yes. Mrs. Kozar.
Yes.
Dr. Loughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Bowler.
Both.
Mr. Palmer.
Yes.
Dr. Sorch.
Yes.
Mrs. Elder.
Yes.
Mrs. Mayes.
Yes.
And that passes 6-1. Thank you.
I move for adoption of Resolution Number 252, to authorize implementation of the Home State Farm Stat exclusion.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution Number 252. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor then please say aye. Anyone who posts? And that passes unanimously.
And I'll move for adoption of Resolution Number 253, the approval of the Rube and Shilla Skidisky grant for 2014, and they are listed on the agenda, and these are all items that will positively impact the educational experience of students.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution Number 253. Any questions or comments or discussion? All those in favor then please say aye. Anyone who posts? And that passes unanimously.
And finally, I move for adoption of Resolution Number 254, tax... And finally, I move for adoption of Resolution Number 254, Tax Exonerations. And those are people who have moved from the district, who have died, who make less than the $5,000 pay income cutoff, et cetera, and have been gone under the by vote Business Office and Solicitor.
So moved. It's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Number 254. Any questions, comments, or discussion? All those in favor then please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously.
Thank you. And the next Finance meeting will occur August 6th at 10:00 a.m. at 10:00 for administration. And I too would like to thank Mr. Watson for his expertise in getting us through all of this evening.
I move for more of the same.
Yes, thanks, Dean.
Thank you, Mrs. Elder. And we will go to Mrs. Kozar with her properties.
Thank you. I move for adoption of Resolution Number 255, to approve the renewal of energy management system of those who have access.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Number 255. Questions or discussion?
Dan, go add the complex to that commensurate line.
Yes.
That includes the big lights, right?
Yes.
Any other questions? All those in favor then please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And that passes unanimously.
I move for the adoption of Resolution Number 256, to accept plant home work pay for project refinancing.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Number 256. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor then please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Kozar.
Sure. I will handle Dr. Loughlin's portion of the agenda. I will move for adoption of Resolution Number 257, approval of sports amended physical examinations.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Number 257. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor then please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. And I will also move for adoption of Resolution Number 258, the approval of dental examiners.
So moved.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Number 258. All those in favor, all any questions or discussion? All those in favor then please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And that passes unanimously. And now, in second, Mr. Mears would make any comments about the official student.
Just to be happy to remember the students today, and it's been very good, and Mike Tomlin himself was there, and Kevin's done a great job, building was amazing, and they are coming on this first back to Memorial Stadium this year, and actually like it, they really went, they were excited, and I think they were a little surprised at the field it is, and truthfully, that's because we had a place to play our spring sports where we didn't have to use the stadium. And Mr. Acacia and I talked about it over and over, and we had to play that field, I mean, this rain, I mean, the loss of this rain all spring, it would have been another battle, but that field today was just amazing, Kevin and I, it was a really nice job, and I feel we made it so much, and they gave it the thumbs up today, and it's good to see all of us first on the map, so. They were excited. And I was really.
Well, that is the news. Thank you.
Anything else to comment on our student activities? Community Relations, Dr. Sorch?
We have adopted Resolution 259, to approve free and reduced price bill policies for 2014-2015. So moved.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Number 259. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor then please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Resolution 260 is approved the National School Life Program, so moved.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Number 260. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor then please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously also.
Resolution 261, approved National School Practice Program, so moved.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Number 261. Questions or discussion on that motion? All those in favor then please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously.
And Resolution Number 262, approved professional services agreement for the parent and hospital, cell hospital.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Number 262. Questions or discussion on that motion? All those in favor then please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And that passes unanimously. Anything else, Dr. Sorch?
I'm exhausted because I've never had so many relations.
It's a lot of community relations, it's a lot.
Thank you so much. Westmoreland Intermediate Unit, I will move for adoption of Resolution Number 263, the bid of work for the 2014-2015 gasoline and diesel fuel. So moved. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Number 263. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor then please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And that passes unanimously. And Board Policy, PSC Liaison, Mrs. Elder.
Yes, I'd like to move for adoption of the first reading of the board policies as listed.
I'll second that motion. So it's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Number 264. Any questions or discussion on any of it? All those in favor then please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And that passes unanimously.
And before we leave this chapter to board policies, I'd like to say that the Policy Committee is not having any board members fight for membership on the committee. It's been my committee for as long as it's existed, I think, or at least as long as I've been here, but policies.
It's been a long time.
Someone has to.
But policies are an extremely important part of what a school board does. Those of us, such as Connie and myself, who have gone to a lot of PSBA meetings, know that there are even school boards in the state that never take any action whatsoever unless a listing of which policy they are using as the power to take that action is listed as part of their agenda. And if there's ever any question of legalities, of procedures, of whatever, those things have to be in our board policies. And since she has been the Board Secretary, Connie has been very faithful in keeping track of all of the communicate that come from the PSBA Policy Service, and making members of the administration and myself aware of needs for change, and often the needs for change are as small as a number, changing 20,000 to 25,000 if you're talking about minimum, or you have to change an intent of a policy when a state court decision has shown you that the previous policy was putting your board in danger of perhaps being open to some sort of a suit, because the policy was no longer in accord with state court decisions. And Connie has taken great care of to do all of that, and I am very personally grateful for that, and I know that the district is grateful as well, and I thank you very much, and congratulate you on your retirement.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mrs. Elder. Mr. Music is not here, and the only thing under transportation is that there's a Transportation Committee meeting on July 23rd at 3:00 p.m., and that will be in your office.
See you next fall.
Okay, thank you. Technology, Mr. Palmer?
Thank you. I'll be reporting over, we have a meeting by 11:00 here at 6:00 p.m.
Thank you. Superintendent's Recommendations, Mrs. Parker?
I'd like to bundle Resolutions, excuse me, Number 265, which are the resignations listed, as well as Resolution Number 266, which is a change in the resignation date that the board had previously voted on for Tonya Godino. So Resolution Number 265 and 266, I ask the board to move.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolutions Number 265 and 266. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor then please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Those passing unanimously.
And I'd ask the board to move on Resolution Number 267, the professional personnel appointments listed.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Number 267. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor then please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And 267 passes unanimously.
And I'd like to introduce the three people that you just appointed, Kelsey Landy, please stand, where's Kelsey? And Kelsey is our new elementary special education, she's taking the senior high school artistic support classroom position, and if anyone has any questions for these people, feel free to ask. Second person is Abigail Wilson. There's Abigail, there's Abigail. She's replacing, actually, Tonya Godino, who we just accepted to change the resignation date for Tonya, Abigail is family senior science teacher at the junior high school. And the last person is Jill Getty. There's Jill. Jill is, we're going to be taking an elementary position here in the district, congratulations. Anyone have any questions? Thank you very much for coming in, congratulations.
To all of you in the district, very happy to have all of you here. Thank you for coming.
I'd ask the board to move on Resolution Number 268, which is to approve the senior high school assistant principal position from a 10-month to a 12-month position, and that is Matt Shittis.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Number 268. Questions or discussion? All those in favor then please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And that passes unanimously.
I ask the board to move on Resolution Number 269, which is to eliminate the senior high school, the trove elementary school, in-school suspension supervisor position.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Number 269. Any questions or discussion on that motion? All those in favor then please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And that passes unanimously.
I'd ask the board to move on Resolution Number 270, which is to create a behavioral support position for the school district.
So moved. It's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Number 270. Questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you.
And I'd ask the board to move on Resolution Number 271, which is to create an additional supplemental position, and it's entitled Assistant Man Director, which would be effective July 1st, 2014, salary points to be determined by the pending contract.
So moved.
So moved.
And it's been moved and seconded, that we adopt Resolution Number 271. Questions or discussion?
I'd like to say that I'm very pleased that such a position is necessary.
These individuals are growing. Thank you. Anyone else have any comments or discussion? All those in favor then please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And that passes unanimously also.
And I'd ask the board to move on Resolution Number 272, which are the support personnel appointments classified listed.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Number 272. Questions, comments, or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And that passes unanimously also.
And I'd like to introduce Jennifer Watson. Where's Jennifer? There she is. Jennifer is our very first behavioral support staff person in the district, so we welcome you, we congratulate you. Does anyone have any questions for Jennifer? Jennifer is familiar with the district, she has worked with us as a one-term sub in the school counselor arena at our elementary building, so we're very pleased to have her in this position. Thanks, Jennifer.
Thank you.
And I'd ask the board to move on Resolution Number 273, which gives permission to realign staff, which is an annual resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Number 273. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And that passes unanimously.
And I'd ask the board to move on Resolution Number 274, which is granting up tenure of the four teachers that are listed on your agenda.
So moved.
So moved. Oh, yeah, I hear something. It's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Number 274. Any questions or discussion on the motion?
I was waiting for Mr. Palmer to.
I had trouble with the per capita, I believe. I'd say I'd kill me for it, man. I'm over it, though. I'm over it.
That's a joke, I don't know what we're talking about. This is a pro forma thing that we have to do when teachers are hired and then have three years of satisfactory performance, and they'll get tenure anyway, what we do is sort of a rubber stamp button. Our rubber stamp is still in good shape, so.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor then please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And that passes unanimously.
And I'd ask the board to move on Resolution Number 275, which is the approval of the employee benefit and pay plans effective July 1st, 2014.
So moved.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Number 275. Questions or discussion? All those in favor then please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And that passes unanimously also.
And I'd ask the board to move on Resolution Number 276, which is the approval of the classified personnel hourly rate of pay as listed.
No move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Number 276. Any questions or discussion on that motion? All those in favor then please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And that passes unanimously.
And I'd ask the board to move on Resolution Number 277, which is the approval of the school resource officer Frank Tempo.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded, we approve Resolution Number 277. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor then please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And that passes unanimously also.
And I'd ask the board to move on Resolution Number 278, which is the approval of the right-to-know officer for the district, which will be Daniel Watson.
No move.
It's been moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution Number 278. Any questions or discussion?
Yeah, but you need them now.
All those in favor then please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Again, thank you, congratulations.
And Dan is telling, I have to wait, because I'm saying.
And at this point in the meeting, the reason we had to approve a new right-to-know officer is that Connie Lager was our old right-to-know officer, and since Connie's last night at a board meeting, she is retiring officially as of June 30th, and tonight we wish to honor Connie. It's kind of a sad night, because it's basically Connie, but leaving. We do have something for Connie. Connie's been a great employee, we certainly will miss her, she's professional and organized, just a good overall person and a great friend, and she's been very dedicated to the district and our community, and I think we'll still see her out in the community a lot. I don't think she's going to retire until now, because I just, I hope, I might have to get back into sleep. So again, we'd like to present Mrs. Lager with a plaque and flowers. I would do, thank you so much for everything.
I do just want to say that this is not really a good job. This was a great part of my life. And knowing and working with the board members throughout 15 years, and all administrators, and Judy and Bill has been just part of me. So it is a mixed emotion that I make. And don't be surprised if you see me sitting back. Because the second and third Tuesdays of the month are like... So, thank you all.
Okay, I feel the need to tell another story. I would like to personally thank Connie while she's getting her picture taken for keeping the superintendent of record in line, so to speak. And as board secretary, she does a great job and will be truly missed. She knows much about treating agendas and doing all of those things that sometimes we need to be corrected on. So truly, we will be giving you a call for some of those resolutions that you don't know how to write. Nobody should... You didn't hear that. Don't listen this time, but now, thank you, Connie. All of your support and service.
Thank you. It's now time for touring of visitors, part two. If anyone in the audience wishes to address the board now on any subject, please approach the podium and give your name and address. Seeing none, I will continue to move to the floor. So moved. It's been moved in second and we adjourn. And all those in favor, any questions or discussion on that motion? All those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And we adjourn. Thank you so much for coming. Thank you, Connie. Thank you for coming.
Action.